And I'd like to welcome everybody to the, excuse me, January 20th meeting of the school committee. I'd like to call this meeting to order and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, liberty and justice for all. Sorry, you'd think I would know that by now by heart. First item of business is to ratify the agenda of January 20th. I'll take a motion for that.
I'll move that we ratify the agenda for January 20th. This is Don.
This is Jeff. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Don, second by Jeff. Any discussion, Don?
No.
Okay, hearing no discussion, call for the vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Excuse me, Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, the agenda is ratified. We've got to wait a couple of minutes, I think, for public comment because we have to wait till 5:34. I believe we do because that's what's on the agenda. As you probably can see, if you're looking at your screen, we have the town manager here. So I'd like to welcome you here, Rodney, this evening, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Not me.
That's not me.
Sorry, that's my children. Apologize.
No worries, Nicole. My dog will start barking soon.
Oh, we had you clock, George.
Pardon?
We had you clock.
That's true. That's true. Sorry, folks, another minute and a half to go. Is there anyone? I don't see anyone on the screen for public comment.
There is nothing in the chat at this moment.
Nothing at the chat. The only name. Oh, Enterprise, Mike DZ from the Enterprise, okay.
I know that later on, I think Matt Traveri is joining us. Dr. Parkinson will be joining us. So we'll keep an eye out for them.
Okay. Okay, by my clock, we've arrived at 5:34 and seeing that there is no public comment or anybody in the line to public comment. We will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is discussion and vote of the FY22 budget. I guess maybe probably the best way to start this off is with the changes, Patty.
So we, or I presented the budget two weeks ago, I believe, and you have it in your packet as well. Our number for FY22 is $23,528,435. That amount includes 131,000. That is for technology that is also in our capital request to the town. The CIP committee has not finalized their list of approved items yet. If that amount is approved, the budget would be $23,397,435, which represents a 2.72% increase over our FY21 budget. We have, I will remind you that our operating side is a level funding. The only thing that are in that, that we don't have control over, unlike some of the other, I think, town departments is our bus contract. There are contractual increases built into that and also our out of district numbers. When a school gets approval for a rate increase, we are required to abide by that. So some of those are in that as well. And then the only other piece to our, you know, increase from last year are the contractual personnel costs, which dollar wise is 520,698. I do want to remind everyone as well that we are reducing seven, our staff numbers are reducing by seven district wide. And also there are four staff retirements that when we leave them in the budget moving forward, we have reduced that salary down to a step eight versus in most cases of step 30 for some of our longtime employees. The increase for unit A, if you are in steps one through 14 is 2%. We have 66 members there and step 15 or higher is a 2.25%. There are 95 members there and we have a 2% increase in unit B, which is our generally our assistant principals and directors and unit C, which are paraprofessionals and administrative assistants. They are at a 2% increase in that. So for the school committee, we, that's where we're at. We have invited town manager Rodney Collins to join us this evening. We did have some recent conversations where Rodney shared the town picture for FY22 and I wanted him to be able to share that with the committee to so that you can make a more informed decision on your vote. Does anybody have any questions before or you want it to go in a different direction at this time? Or do you want Rodney to share?
Hearing nothing, Rodney, it's you are on, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's a pleasure being here with the superintendent and the board or committee members. I wanted to start by giving somewhat of an overview. I could get into each account in terms of the place where we are at right now. But I think in simple terms, what I can tell you is the town is seeking to fund the majority of wages that are attributed to merit steps and or colas with the respective collective bargaining agreements that have been approved at town meeting, with the exception of a couple positions which are not funded as a direct result of the recommendation, which is going to go forward. I typically would not be commenting on this because I have not introduced any recommendation yet to the Board of Selectment that is scheduled for next Monday. But I also understand that you folks are in need of this information desperately in order to make an informed decision relative to your request and your status. So as far as the expenses or what I refer to as the operating expenses, generally, everything was level funded and that did result in reductions from requests, specifically in human resources, in information technology, in conservation, in natural resources. We were able to reduce the planning board request as well, only because there's going to be a different funding mechanism for their consulting engineer. The fire department under their expenses were reduced as well. The police were not because they came in at level funded. The building inspector was also reduced, as was DPW. DPW, in addition to being level funded in expenses, which amounted to a significant drop there. Also, I did not have a couple positions funded. Building and grounds was also level funded. What wasn't level funded, the transfer station at this point, I don't see any way that can be level funded just because of the data that I'm looking at. And we also did not level fund health. The additional funds in health were based on what the health agent requested to ensure that the vaccination was implemented in a timely manner. I would certainly hope that we are going to be assisted there by other government entities. But in case we were not, we wanted to be able to implement that program in a timely manner. There's also going to be some additional follow up at the library. Their expense account is under a formula that is related to staffing. At this point, we have a couple positions that have not been staffed and at least during the COVID situation, I expect that to continue. There are two, what I refer to as particular items that still remain to be seen in terms of what the actual figures are going to be. One is medical insurance and the other is the Cape Cod tech tuition. Under the Cape Cod tech, we have budgeted 4.0% under medical insurance. We budgeted 9%. I am hoping that that figure actually comes in lower than what I was projecting and what I just told you. But we just don't have that information yet. So essentially on the town side, we have looked at approximately $600,000 in reductions. These are obviously non-education departments as of the current figures. We did reduce, as I mentioned, a couple positions in terms of funding. Other than that, we are funding or tentatively funding all of the existing positions as they currently are on paper. However, some positions are vacant that we're not filling at the moment because of COVID, specifically like at the library. So what does it all mean? It means that we're trying to tighten the belt as much as possible. That has been the general impression that I have been under through the finance committee. I've had some initial dialogue with them. As a matter of fact, one of the questions that I was asked at a recent meeting was whether or not we could freeze wages. And I said, no, that that isn't a possibility without impact bargaining. I don't think we're at any point where that should be front and center in the discussions, but certainly avoiding any layoffs and maintaining our staffing levels, at least with the current employees, I think is an objective. And it maintains our operating efficiency. So the school request can be fully funded if the committee did adjust the school choice to 400,000 more than what you have. I understand that might be an initial shocker, but I just want you to realize that on the town side, unless we were to reduce staffing levels at this point, there isn't much more to get to where we need to be in terms of maintaining our financial stability. What I also took into consideration, and I know the superintendent can correct me if this is inaccurate, but I believe in fiscal year 20, there was $568,000 earmark for school choice. And in fiscal year 21, I believe it was 538,000. I believe the current balance is over $2 million. I think, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the school committee has wanted to keep at least a minimum of 500,000 in school choice. That would enable you to do just that if you used an additional 400,000. I believe the concern is we are dealing with the COVID crisis and we're dealing with some other issues. I want to point out that the town is committed to cover COVID costs with other funding if necessary. And obviously, if we reached an emergency situation, then I think that's when we would have to collectively consider a special town meeting and seek funding from the stabilization account, which I would certainly not recommend at this juncture.
Rodney, could I ask one quick question?
And I would just also add that, you know, we're accounting for these expenses outside of the of the operating budget. But yes, go ahead with any question.
No, I was just wondering, when you have Cape Cod tech in at the 4%, it seems like that that would be, I know that he presents his budget, but we're, you're not giving Mashpee Public Schools a 4% increase. Why would you budget them at 4%?
I can only respond that that is a projection based on the data that was available to the finance team. And that was an amount that was recommended that I fund. Because quite frankly, like for medical insurance, we have lowered the projected enrollees. We don't feel that we can adjust that any further because I checked with the char and they certainly suggested that that not be done. As far as projected revenue is concerned, I know that we've been conservative in the past and we certainly want to be responsible. But yet at the same time, we're fast approaching the point where if something were to occur that altered any of these projections, we don't have any wiggle. Whereas I think historically, we've looked at some of our estimates and because of our conservative approach, we've been able to survive quite well. We've also tried to maintain a minimum of 3 million in free cash. Why is that? I would defer to the to the finance team. But essentially, what I don't want to jeopardize is our AAA bond rating, if we can prevent it. And I also want to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a financial situation that would would end up being regrettable once down the road.
Thank you, Rodney. Just as a little bit of background here about how the school committee works. We have various working groups, one of which is the finance working group. And something like this would have been referred to them for discussion prior to presenting it to the school committee. But with the time constraints here, that was just impossible for the finance working group to get together and to discuss this and make a recommendation of the finance committee. I'm up to the will of the committee.
And I just would like to point out one other thing, if I could, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I know that the schedule was a little frustrating and quite frankly, I can't, I can't deny that the schedule being so compressed is a little frustrating. The schedule is dictated by certain dates, whether it be charter driven. Obviously, you folks are submitting, or I should say the superintendent is submitting a budget request in the fall. And here we are in the middle of January. So you might be saying, well, what what takes so long? December is generally the time period in which these reviews are conducted. It enables the Board of Selectment and or the finance committee to attend the budget reviews that any department had or the school submits. And then once that process is over, which is generally just before the holidays, then we get into what I call rolling up sleeves to try to come up with a figure that is going to provide resolution. I I don't want to cast any negativity in this dialogue at all. I think the superintendent or staff have done a tremendous job in the presentation. There was a lot of detail in her supplemental and I think that's a credit her and and all of the work that was done to produce this. I would like to make no alterations whatsoever, to be frank with you. But I feel that I'm in a position now where if we don't come to some sort of alternative, that it's going to result in some operational reductions in town services that I'm just not prepared to give up at this point. But I'm certainly willing to listen to any committee members' concerns. Nothing has been technically formalized yet. That is done on Monday before the Board of Selectmen. And I certainly would be willing to go over any figure or any department, whether it be wages or expenses that you may have questions about. And I do appreciate all of the professional dialogue that the superintendent and her staff have provided so far.
Thank you, Rodney. And as I think everyone knows, a vote is required this evening for the charter, if I'm correct on that.
Not require, Georgia. The timing of it is what's driving it in order for the town manager to be able to meet his requirement. So we could delay it if we chose to.
Okay. All right. Why don't we start with questions? I know what I would recommend, but I'm just the chair. So going through the line, Kathy, questions? Sorry, new kid on the block.
Um, I mean, kind of looking at Oliver and I guess I'm just, so Patty, you sent that other spreadsheet that kind of had the four options. Is that kind of, I mean, that's pretty much in line with what we just heard the town manager describe.
Speak a little louder, Kathy.
Sorry, Patty, you sent that spreadsheet that had the four options earlier. That's kind of pretty much what we just went over with the town manager, correct?
Well, not exactly because the town manager is asking that you increase your school choice. Another 400,000, that's not reflected in any of those.
Okay. I'm going to pass it along to someone else who might have more questions.
Can I clarify something? Sorry, that Kathy just asked and so the items that you were given on the spreadsheet does reflect the school committee putting in some more school choices and just enough to cover the it was correct. It's what what would allow the town to cover the salaries and what we would make up the difference for operations. And really, it's it's even not, it's more than that. But I'm sorry, I just wanted to clarify what those numbers were reflecting.
Right. So option, I guess it's three and four indicate that we would contribute an additional $98,424,000 from school choice funds to offset FY22. And what Hope just said is that would make there, there would be no impact to the town on the operating side, operating expense side of the budget. And that's where Rodney was coming up with basically another 302,000 because if that 98 were covered, that comes up to approximately the 400,000 that the town is looking for.
Did I understand the CIP hasn't acted yet? Is that correct? Okay, Jeff, questions?
Yes, sorry, I lost my mute button. And I saw the I saw the chart for the school choice offset. And so if we add an additional $300,000, so we're basically offsetting almost a million dollars in school choice for FY22, which would put us at the end of FY22, a million dollars left in school choice. Is that include, does that include that million dollars include the FY22 receipt of what we expect or assume school choice is going to be? Or is this only money we have in place right now?
So let me just open the file. So I'm looking at the same document as you are. So that includes the projected revenue. I projected 535,000 for FY22 revenue.
Does that answer your question, Jeff?
Yeah, I'm looking at, I think I'm looking at the same chart she's looking at. So when we see the additional offset on that school choice chart of 98,000 and then another initiatives, and then we have to add 300,000 to that. Oh, I see. So the FY, the projected revenue, I apologize. Okay. So you, this 1.4 million dollars in projected revenue, that includes the running balance plus the projected revenue for FY22 school choice.
Right. It does not take into account any of the COVID costs that we
Right, right.
We have on the book right now.
Is that revenue that's going to be there? Is that in arrears revenue? Or is that's what we're going to have at the particular moment in FY22, not money that we've gotten FY21?
That would be FY22 revenue.
Because I think it's important to understand that we spend, and I, this is just to the group and Rodney as well, that we spend school choice funds in arrears on purpose so that we have the flexibility to absorb changes in out of districts and things like COVID, which of course, none of us ever planned for that. Okay. All right. Thanks, Ashlyn.
And in the following years, it's a known figure when we look back onto this year's actual numbers.
Right, exactly, exactly. It makes it a lot easier to plan because we're only spending what we know we have. So that me, so we'd have to add another 300,000, we have to take another 300,000 off of that number and we can make a fairly good assumption unless we have a complete crash in school choice participation around a million dollars left.
Right. If you're not, if you're not doing any of the things below the chart. So yes, you're correct.
What, I'm sorry, what's that?
Well, just when below the chart where she talks about these potential COVID expenses.
Oh, right. I'm sorry. Yeah, exactly, exactly. That doesn't include any additional expenses, correct? Any kind of flexibility at all? And that, any of that stuff would definitely have to be another request to the town if we move down this path.
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Sir, if I could, I just want to remind you what I did indicate. The town is committed to cover COVID costs without the funding if necessary. And we are accounting for these expenses outside of the operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that, Rodney? So you're saying for the school year 2122, if we have any unforeseen COVID costs, that the town will cover that?
Yes, and I'm going to specifically defer to the finance director and she is here, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Sure thing. Hi, Don.
Sorry. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Don.
Yeah, we're not on the
Well, that's, that's good. Yes. So what we're doing with the COVID, obviously, this is pounding times for everyone. You guys have done an unbelievable job with the education aspect of it. As you know, we received 1.2 million in the CARES Act, the first round of CARES Act funding, which has allowed us to cover COVID costs up to this point. That along with FEMA funding that we are expecting has kept us going. We ask every department to submit their COVID expenses to us. We ask every department to submit their COVID expenses to us directly. We account for them outside of everyone's operating budgets so that it does not deplete your operations or any other department's operations. We are hoping that we do get another round of funding that's coming through. We don't know yet, there's a new administration in place. So hopefully, we'll know a little bit more as we go further down the road. But in speaking with the town manager, we do feel that it, the responsibility of the town where this is absolutely unprecedented times and expenses that no one could have ever imagined, that the town is committed to ensure that COVID does not deplete your operation, operational budgets, and that we will go back to the town if necessary, if for whatever reason we do not receive additional federal funds. As the town manager noted, we do have stabilization funds. We do have options that we would handle that situation. So we're trying to assure the departments that we are not going to expect all of you to cover the unexpected COVID costs that are here, are coming, and who knows how long they'll last.
Thank you, Don. Are you, are you all set, Jeff?
I think it was I that asked the question, I just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wanted to clarify, so we're talking about the next school year, not the current one we're in. We currently have a $600,000 deficit that that, you know, COVID, these are COVID costs for this school year that we have running into the end of the school year that we have to fund. And then we don't know what will happen in '21. And as a committee member, I've regarded the choice funds as an an option for us to pay any additional costs in the '2122 school year, should they arise. We we don't know what they may be right now. I assume they're going to be less than the 1.5 million that we had to spend this year that was covered by, you know, different funding mechanisms. I appreciate your optimism that you think you're going to get funding. The last I heard, schools were getting funds, but municipalities were not. So I don't know where that stands with the change of administration. But I think it, I I regarded those choice funds as kind of our safety net for whatever happens next. So I I guess dipping into them so substantially and basically covering our, more than our entire requested increase for '2122, which is, I think with less, the capital expenses was about 2.7% was all we were requesting, which I think, you know, Falmouth was, is about 2.5, Barnstable, similar. This is pretty even across most of the Cape districts. And if we bumped up our offset in school choice as what to what you're requesting, it's almost a 4% of the budget that we would be covering out of choice. So the entire increase would be covered by the schools, actually more than the entire increase. So that worries me a little bit. Going into a year where we don't really know what we're going to expect. So maybe you could address my concerns?
I will try. So I'm not quite sure where the $600,000 deficit in your operations is coming from, because we are accounting for COVID expenses outside of your operations. So I'm not quite sure, I haven't had a chance to to speak to Ashley or Hope or Patty about that. But those expenses should not be in your operations. We are tracking all of COVID expenses outside of operation, operating budgets, excuse me. So I'm not sure where the $600,000 number comes from.
Can we pause for a second and just make sure? I I don't want to say something that's incorrect. Ashley, are we still in the hole this year, or has that been covered?
So in conversations with the town, this is kind of what we talk about each school committee meeting. We have $600,000 from December 31st until the end of the school year of costs that we know are going to be related to COVID. As we continue this, as the town continues to have funds until they deplete, they are picking up those costs, so those costs will go down as we go. However, in conversations that Don and I have been having, the town has one pot of money, and we have never explicitly said if they were covering, they were able to cover all 600 by the end of the year. And I don't want to put words in your mouth either, Don.
Well, I just wanted to clarify what I was referring to. That's what I was referring to. So it it's just for me, it's kind of like a measure of just the extent of how expensive it could be to add, you know, if school lunches are free again next year, for example, or something like that. So so go ahead, Don, go ahead and finish, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So that's what we wanted to just kind of assure the the school that we in no way expect you to have a deficit, we don't want you to have a deficit. It, this is challenging. Everybody asks if we're going to going to receive more CARES Act funding, and I am optimistic. I say I I I hope we do. But again, if we do not, we we would never, I I shouldn't speak to the town for the town manager, but I can imagine he would expect a department to deplete their budget, cover unexpected, unanticipated and unbudgeted expenses, but he can speak for that.
Oh, Don is absolutely correct, and I just want to assure the committee that if we did get into that unfortunate set of circumstances, and I think it requires us all collectively seeking a special town meeting. And obviously, we were always striving to never hit up the stabilization account. But in my view, that is exactly what it would be for, because it was clearly unanticipated. And if this isn't an emergency of of public health, then I don't know what would reach that level. So I would lean on superintendent and the school committee to support me at a special town meeting for the purposes of releasing those funds to cover those costs that are in question.
Okay. Don, do you have any questions? I'm sorry, I'll get you Nicole, Don?
Sure. So Rodney, in regard to the CIP budget, is that being frozen then, given the budget constraints that you have?
No, no, sir, that's, that comes from the capital stabilization. I'm not going to suggest to you that everything is going to be funded. And I know that the superintendent serves on that committee with me. We have had a list and and we're attempting to prioritize. There are a lot of items that require follow up, like for instance, the the cost of leasing vehicles versus outright purchasing vehicles and putting some things off. I think the, and I don't want to misspeak, and I know superintendent can certainly add anything. But I I think the only item that is on the school list that I, and and again, there's been no vote taken, but I think the only item that is not looking favorable right now is the turf. But aside from that, I think everything is on the table and under review. I'm not saying everything's going to be funded, but I I can tell you, Don, that in that $131,000 reduction in the operating because of the duplication at CIP, I am going to be in support of funding that at the CIP level. I am only one vote, but you you have me now on on a recording, supporting that.
So can you or the superintendent tell me, when I look at the listing, what that 131 represents?
Uh, yes, actually, do you have it? I think I think it's Chromebooks, teacher PCs and wireless upgrades. And I think the breakdown was 45,000, 56,000 and 30,000 respectively. And I think that totals 131, although I was not a math teacher.
That's correct.
All right. And so Patty, the interactive boards for the classrooms, you're passing on that?
No, nothing's been decided in CIP. We proposed that, that's still a want on our list. There's nothing we're taking off the list.
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out if we include, or if we take the 131 out of our budget or because it's in CIP, then or if we leave it conversely in our budget, then it would, doesn't need to be in CIP. And that 131 could then potentially be redistributed to other items that you're wanting for CIP through CIP. So I I guess, trying to figure out, because this sheet shows me well, technology, I mean, our total request here is over a million dollars.
That that is a combination with Catherine Laurent's DPW requests. I think I emailed that to you. The the technology request that we have in place in the 131 was requested several years back to continue to put this in the CIP. I really expect it based on our committee's meeting. I don't expect that to not be funded. And I think, given the other requests in technology, I don't really expect that that would be denied either, particularly given the year, the demands of this year and the potential for next year. Those items are pretty important.
Then the the safety upgrades, the flagpole, those items?
Those have, I mean, again, CIP, we only, every, every department has done their presentation. The CIP committee has not then gone back its next Friday, I believe, rehashing and coming down to our final numbers. The security upgrades is definitely important. It's a continuation of what we have already started, and 50,000 of of security work was done through a grant that Dr. Hanscom was able to obtain. And so we need to make sure all of the classrooms have these locking mechanisms. So we, all of those things, with the exception, obviously, under Catherine had the the turf field, which I think will get pushed a year or two, are not things we're at a point of saying we're not interested in having.
Can I just, Don, I think you're asking though, only the 131 of tech is in our budget currently. All of the other things we asked for for CIP is not reflected in the proposed superintendent's FY22 budget. Is that what you were asking? And I'm sorry, there's broccoli being made behind me.
I'm trying to gauge, I guess, how important those items are, because if they're not in CIP and they're not in our operating or in the appropriation request, then the only other source of funding is school choice. Correct?
I think the idea with CIP is we're putting things out there that we would like, and then we could, this committee would have a discussion afterwards about whether you wanted to use choice or wait another year and see if it came back around. Patty, you can correct me if I'm misstating that.
Yeah, I'm not sure, other than the 131, that this is the place for a discussion about that CIP list at this point, because the CIP committee has not come back with sort of a cut list, or here's the max we're going to give the whole town or each department. So I feel like it's a little premature to spend time looking at this list.
Well, I think if if the town manager is telling us that he needs $400,000 more in school choice to cover our budget, then he has some number in mind for CIP for a total. And so I don't know what that number is, but clearly, he's using it in his calculus. And if if Don's point is, if we're not going to get any of this stuff on CIP, we might need some of our choice funds to cover these, these things. So again, we don't really have all the information.
That's my question.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I I just want to remind you, Nicole, that in terms of CIP, that's from capital stabilization funds. That's a different source, so I just want to make that clear. So there isn't necessarily a a direct connect to the bottom line at CIP versus the operating budget, which is going to be funded based on the levy, based on revenue projections, based on free cash that the town is comfortable utilizing. So we're talking about a couple of different things. I understand your your concern and well, well taken. But there's actually been no final resolution at CIP level. And the only reason why I mentioned the turf is because selectman Gottlieb was very outspoken about that kind of a figure going on at the same time as wastewater. And and he's one member, I'm one member. This is the superintendent, so I don't know what the ultimate outcome is going to be. But if I were to make a Pete Rose bet, then I would say the turf might be failing.
Well, I think that's a pretty, it's a pretty good bet, Rodney.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody i- in this time is expecting that to go through for a number of the reasons you've outlined and and some of the obvious circumstances that this country finds itself in right now. But I still think, circling back to my original question, I I still want to understand why the schools are being asked to cover their more than their requested increase entirely out of choice funds. It doesn't sound to me like you're covering merit increases and COLAs for our employees, because our operating budget, the increases to our operating budget is just, it's not even $200,000. I mean, we're not, we've cut positions, we're not, we're not increasing. This is a level service budget, so I'm confused.
Well, I'd be more than happy to sit down and go over each account throughout the town. But as I said, with the exception of two or three of those items that I articulated at the beginning of this conversation, everything is level funded, not level service, level funded. And there were a couple of positions, as I mentioned earlier, that have not been funded, that were reduced, or I should say temporarily eliminated or suspended or put on hold, whatever you want to call it. They're not funded in this, in this budget. I I know that I I seem to be just focusing on the 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 bottom line. But what I'm trying to do is just avoid any layoff at the town level. And if we're not going to fund a merit step or a COLAR consistent with a collective bargaining agreement, the terms and conditions of which I cannot unilaterally change, as you know, there isn't much wiggle room other than, as I mentioned before, I'm cautiously optimistic that that figure at medical insurance could be adjusted. I don't want to suggest what you folks do, but if you could just hold off your vote to see if I can firm up that number, then I might be able to adjust something that is a little bit more favorable based on what the actual number is. And I, and I, and this is a very positive and very productive discussion, and I certainly don't want to argue with any of the points that you have made. But the town does absorb on its side the medical insurance, and that, of course, is related to personnel throughout the town. And we just want to make sure that we have an adequate number there before we go and make any adjustment. I I am comfortable that it could be potentially less, but I'm not so comfortable to say that if we have very little to no wiggle room left, that We should go with, let's say hypothetically, 6% or 5%, when I don't know. That, that figure is going to stand because then somebody would turn around and say, well, that was totally irresponsible and your projection was way off. But if you don't need to vote tonight, then I think maybe. Hit pause if that's. Amicable to the committee and let's see where we are in just a few days.
I think that's a marvelous idea. I would give time for the finance working group to do their due diligence as far as everything is concerned and time for the town to. They'll get firmer numbers, more firm than they currently have. I'm not wording that correctly, but you know what I mean? How does the committee feel about that?
George, I have two other questions for the town manager, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
What was the medical increase last year? Cause I thought I saw it and I, I thought it was unusually low.
It was very unusually low. It was the goose egg. It was zero.
That's what I thought. Okay. The, the other.
So, so Dawn, if we get another goose egg, which I don't think we will, but if we do, I just, I just found some money for you.
Yeah, I, I'm praying for goose eggs now. The other question I had.
Call it the golden goose.
Yeah, no kidding. The, the other question I had, are we still put, we, the town still putting 250,000? Into, is it the stabilization or into the OPEB?
Yeah, I'm gonna.
That's a Don question.
Yes. And yes.
Yes, you are correct, Don. We, as part of our bond rating, one of the recommendations by the rating agency was to. Begin to address our OPEB. Obligation liability, I should say. And as a way to do that, we have committed through the budget process. $250,000 a year to go into that. Fund, the OPEB fund. 250,000, when you're talking 60 something million is really not a lot of money, but at least it shows we are making an effort to address it. We acknowledge it. We're doing what we can. So that has become as much as we can to keep our bond rating. Where we, we want it to be, which is a triple A. We've been. Heating to that. That recommendation. So what I would, you know, that is something that, that the selectmen and town manager can discuss further. The problem is once your bond rating starts to decline, you pay for that in other places. So when we go to borrow money. That's going to rear its ugly head at us. So we're trying to do this, this dance where we're keeping. You know, our bond rating up where we're trying to do what we can to. You know, appease the rating agencies, I guess, if I can say that, but follow their recommendations really is what I'm, what I'm trying to say. So. That, that's really important.
No, and I appreciate that. And I remember back in the old days, being very concerned about. That we weren't paying towards reducing that liability. So. But when all options become on the table, that's obviously an option that has to be considered. The other question for you, Don. You did an analysis a couple of years ago, as I recall. In regard to projecting out the overall funding of the town. We were going to hit a cliff. I thought that was FY 22. Has that changed?
Well, it was, I believe it was originally FY 21, and here we are in FY 21, and we are doing okay. Of course COVID hit and who knows. What's going to happen from here. But yes, the revenue analysis, of course, you know, we are projecting. We do a 10-year revenue analysis and to try to project, especially during these times, even six months out, as you know, is difficult. So. We, through conservative budgeting, through measures that we took regarding policies. Reserving free cash, creating a capital stabilization fund. Through all those measures, we have been able to get through what we thought could be a point where we would need an override. We are not there. Hopefully we will not be there. I will be updating the revenue analysis after this budget. Process is complete and we can see what we project out. Again, projections I could change. I, you know, six months from now, but we do the best that we can with what we know now and what we, we can estimate. And that's all we can do. But luckily we are not facing an override at this time in this fiscal year.
I guess my, one of my concerns is if we take it basically a million dollars out of. The school choice this year. Next year, we probably will be faced with the same scenario unless something changes. And we quickly. Deplete the golden goose. If we do that. So that, that's one of my concerns.
Well, I'm hoping for another egg through. Some marijuana, brother.
Well, that, that would be a good one, possibly too. I, I guess. George, our next meeting is February.
I don't have that in front of me. I think it's February 20th or something like that.
The 24th.
The 24th. When do, Rodney, when do you need? That budget number from the school committee? To meet your deadlines.
That I wasn't anticipated to ask, or I should say. Hold on a second. If, if you just give me one minute, I'm going to just get the schedule in my office.
I have the schedule.
Rodney, Ashley has the schedule.
Okay, I'm sorry. If you could just cite that, Ashley, I would appreciate it.
Problem. So it looks like town reports are due from departments on February 8th. And the deadline for submission of town meeting articles is the 8th. The town manager budget recommendation to finance committee is February 11th.
So we would need to have another meeting in early February.
Right.
And, and, and Mr. Chair, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we modify that? One year after the initial proposal?
Yes. I forget the reasoning behind it, but we did one year. So what the town manager is suggesting. And I would entertain his emotion is that we postpone the vote on the FY 22 budget. And schedule a meeting for February 10th, which is a Wednesday.
What? Can I make a suggestion? I'm wondering why you wouldn't maybe do it on the third because that, the 11th is when Rodney has to present.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
They said the 10th cuts it a little close where Rodney has to present. I believe the date was the 11th, Ashley. Is that what the finance, right? Could we meet on the third?
Okay.
Have enough information that gives a week, that gives about 10 or 11.
Is that before or after the CIP committee meets?
That's after the CIP's meeting on the 29th of January next.
So we would know what they would, would have approved.
And I, would two weeks be enough for the finance working group to get together and go over all of this?
Yeah, we would probably do something in that week prior to the.
So I would entertain a motion to postpone the vote on the FY 22 budget and postpone that vote until the February 3rd, until February 3rd. At which point we will add a meeting to the calendar. Be following, the meeting after that is February 20 something. Am I correct?
24th.
We probably could discuss at that point in time whether we need a meeting on the 24th, but we definitely need to have one on the 3rd at this point. So I would entertain a motion to postpone the, a vote on the budget until. A meeting to be scheduled for February 3rd.
Mr. Chair, I move to postpone the vote on the school committee FY 22 budget until the next. To be scheduled special meeting on February the 3rd.
Thank you, sir. A motion by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second by Don.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Jeff?
No, this is Jeff. No.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I wanted to just clarify and Ashley can correct me if I'm wrong. But if we had taken this approach during this year or this past year. And, you know, we've returned, I don't know, I think about a half a million dollars to the town. I just want to be clear that if we take this approach and we put $938,000 of choice funds up in this budget and we don't need all of it. You're, the town is not going to get any funds back because of the way we use our choice funds. So we will offset them in the budget, correct? And then if we, if transportation costs that we have to budget for end up being less or. I mean, we typically give money back to the town every year because we have to budget for things that are uncertain.
Which is appreciated.
Right. Well, I'm just saying Rodney, if we go this route, there's not going to be anything coming back.
I, Nicole, I hear you loud and clear and I, I understand your, your points. They're well taken. I'm just going to remain cautiously optimistic. I want to really get the, the hard figure relative to the medical insurance.
Okay. I just felt like I needed to say that in public for everyone to hear. So thank you.
And I, and I appreciate that.
And then that's, in that same token, Mr. Chair, if I could, I think this is a, another lesson learned in the fact that the way that we do the budget cycle.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's clear that when we first started discussing offsetting our budget with school choice, that one of the caveats of that was that we needed to use the CIP. To do our special projects and capital improvements. Well, it's clearly. We can't make a firm budget decision now in, you know, in this environment of, you know, fiscal restraint without knowing what the. Approval is for the CIP. So this would be something I, I think definitely needs to get looked at next year before we decide to approve a budget.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion, which is to postpone vote on, until a meeting to scheduled on February 3rd? Seeing none, I'll call for vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And George, yes. Pass, passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your time, both Rodney and Don.
Okay, if, if the superintendent and the committee are all set with us, we're going to be signing off.
We are for this evening, sir. I'm sure we'll be in touch though.
Yes, you will be, or I will be. And thank you very much for your time and attention. Appreciate it. Stay safe, stay healthy and happy new year.
Same to you, sir. Stay safe. The next item on the agenda is a consent motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on January 6th.
This is Don. I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for January 6th, 2021.
Thank you, Don. Is there a second to the motion?
This is Kathy. I second.
Thank you, Kathy. Motion by Don, seconded by Kathy. Any discussion, Don? Okay, calling for the vote. Kathy?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Nicole, I'm sorry, Don?
Yes.
Yes.
And George, yes. Passes unanimously. Next is the report of the superintendent.
Hey, I will be brief because I do want the principals to do also a brief share out. We do have an article appearing in the Mashpee Enterprise this Friday. One of the highlights from that, I just want to thank the Mashpee Men's Club. Last Wednesday, they hosted their annual high five event for Mashpee Middle High School seniors. Normally that's an in-person event. We were able to successfully host it in the virtual world and we had 15 of our members of the class of 2021 share. With the members of the men's club, sort of their journey through the Mashpee schools and some of their outside interests and their hopes and plans for the future. And so really. Was a rewarding event and we're really appreciative of the support that the Mashpee Men's Club continues to provide, not only to the schools, but to the Mashpee community. So. We're grateful to them. I think at the last meeting, I did talk about some of the Cape Cod. Five educational mini grant. recipients. I'm not sure I hit them all, but in this article, there's a list of, and let me just quickly count the number of teachers who applied. We have Amanda Howe, Christina Frazier, LaShona Vitelli, Jill Hill, Christine Mastrugia Como, Grace Wang. Anne Marie Finn and Jennifer Kenny working together. Heather O'Donnell. Deb Troyanos, Tom Hoppenstadt, Lauren Majakamo and Lauren Richards working together, Marith Mayan, Elizabeth Babich and Kim Palmer. And so those are nice little mini grants that they have created some really interesting activities for our students. To learn today. Actually, we are in, where's my list? Today is day 73 of 170 days for our students. Remember this is a slightly shortened year for our students. We are going one day at a time. I'm very pleased so far with the fact that we have been able to maintain our current learning plan. Just an interesting fact, we do watch staff. Absences and we, you know, whether it's a Mashpee. Public schools quarantine or a non-Mashpee public school quarantine because they are considered a close contact or have tested positive. But just looking at today's absences, we had 23. And when I look back a year ago, picking also a Wednesday, there were 23. With mostly people out being sick. So I think our staff is doing a really good job of. Following all the safety protocols. I think our schools have done a great job. Most of the, not most, but many of the close contacts that you see on our dashboard. Are siblings of the student who tested positive. So technically they're not an MPS close contact, but because they attend our schools, we're counting them that way. So within a family that, that makes a lot of sense that your other siblings would be considered close contacts. And again, I know I do do the shout out all the time for our staff. As well as particularly for Nurse Stacy or our district nurse coordinator, Dr. Parkinson as well. Everybody seems to be working really well in terms of communicating with each other. In a really timely manner so that we are avoiding any situations that could put our learning plan at risk. But again, we watch it every day and if we had to switch the plan, we would. We have had some cooms classrooms. Who have gone remote. For a certain period of time and that has worked because the teacher ends up having to be remote as well. Most of our close contacts within our elementary schools are coming from recess or buses. Recession at Quash, for example, they now, when they come in from playing at recess, they have a form that the, the students fill out who they played with. So if we do have to contact trace back to a certain date. It's very helpful. So everybody keeps sort of reinventing our practices and protocols based on scenarios that come upon us and each time we're, we're getting better, being a safer. Community. But I think that's the only overview I'm going to provide. Just a, a shift to the principals. I don't know if you've decided who's going first. Oh, Mary Kate. No.
We'll defer to Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Thank you for giving me the chance to kind of give you a quick update on Mashpee Middle High School and our current progress. In the 2021 school year. Superintendent DeBoer mentioned the Mashpee Men's Club High Five Event, which I thought was done very well virtually. And just kind of one of those opportunities to remind us of just how awesome our kids are, our students are each and every day. And just to be able to see our 15 seniors interact, prepare. And be articulate and really kind of share their, their journey in the Mashpee Public Schools was, was really energizing. And this really makes you just remember how, how important our kids are and just how amazing they are. So it was a really wonderful event. Just a couple of quick things. You may or may not have noticed that our representative to the Mashpee School Committee from the middle high school, Skylar Rimple was on WBZ Channel 5 News and. Over the weekend, Martin Luther King Junior Weekend, it's a day of service. And as our former Project 351 representative from Mashpee Middle School, when she was in the eighth grade. She represented herself extremely well, represented herself, her family, our school and our, our community at the highest level as she always does. And it was just great to, to see her be able to share her experience. And it was just great to see her be able to share her experience and just remind folks how important service is and how there's never a bad time for it. It's always the time to serve others and to serve your community. So I want to thank Skylar for all she does for our school, our community, and I know that she's going to go on to very great things someday. Another big highlight, very recently, was our Friday, January 15th. We had a professional development day for all staff in the Mashpee Public Schools. And that, in a quick synopsis, was an inspiring experience for me as the principal and for many of our faculty and staff. As we're nearing the halfway point of the year, which is hard to believe, you know, we're ready to continue moving forward. But just like we do all the time, we're being reflective, and we're always trying to problem solve, you know, the things that are going great, but also looking at those where we need a little bit of work and some fine tuning or streamlining. And to see the spirit of our faculty and staff as they were coming up with as many possible ways to engage, to change what we're doing, to just be as innovative as possible, was really, really quite inspiring, excuse me. And then when you see, you know, a difficult time for education this year, and a lot of schools that have not been able to do what we've done, it really comes down to the staff, that they're completely committed and dedicated to our students and families, and will really do whatever it takes to make sure our kids have what they need. So that day, you know, although it was a long, extra-long weekend for our students, the faculty and staff did a phenomenal job, and I do want to give them a huge shout out. And then lastly, as I do at most of these meetings, when I get a chance to address you all, I do want to recognize the superintendent, assistant superintendent, Nurse Stacy, Dr. Curley, Matt Traveri, all of our team for really just kind of making sure that this year continues to go and move forward in a positive way, and also to make sure that we're providing our students with every opportunity that we're able to. So, you know, it's been an interesting year, to say the least, but, you know, we're continuing to work. We're continuing to chip away at things that we need to improve on, and we will continue to press onward in a positive and very optimistic tone. So again, just a quick update from the middle high school, and questions if you have them.
Who's next? I'll go. I'm usually in the middle. Hi, everyone. It's great to see you tonight. And I'll pick up where Mark left off and say this is a really interesting year. But there are some things that just haven't changed, and that is the hard work of our teachers and our staff and our students. On that professional development day last Friday, it was an opportunity for the teachers to dive into the data that we received after our STAR reading and math benchmarks. And they were able to identify trends in student performance that where they were and also look for some strengths and areas of concern. And the way the data reads is it really addresses each standard by grade level. So the teams did a phenomenal job, all came up with some really great action steps that include some reading incentives, writing incentives that they're going to be working on. Grade six really identified some areas in math that they really want to focus on to make sure that those students are heading up to the middle school ready to tackle algebra. So I think overall, it was really a valuable time spent focusing on what we can do at this midway point to adjust our practices and see where kids really are performing. And, you know, I think one of the frustrations is we know kids are not working at the same pace they were before. And so teachers know they're not teaching at the same rate they were before as well. And so it's giving everybody the, I don't want to say pass, but giving everyone that recognition that we're working really hard in focusing on those most important standards to move students forward. So I think it was really valuable time and well spent. I also have had the ability lately to do a lot of walkthroughs in the class virtually. And it is so fascinating to watch the interaction and the way our teachers are presenting and teaching materials for students at home as well as those in the classroom. And what's most, it's amazing to see how much time that they really are spending teaching things that are out of the curriculum. And the students are just getting such a wide range of learning and use of the technology, but applying it in really meaningful ways. One classroom I was in, in a fourth grade class, and the students are sharing their own screens when they're at home to the rest of the class to explain their thinking and demonstrating. It's really an amazing just exchange of information, knowledge, and all of those side things that the teachers are teaching that we didn't before. So it makes sense that our pace is off from where it used to be a little, but not in a bad way necessarily. It can also be in a good way. And the last thing I do want to share with you is we're very, very excited to welcome a speaker next week. We're going to have a virtual assembly schoolwide, and he will be presenting his kindness speeches in excitement for Kindness Week. And he will be engaging both the students and families, which is really different. Before, we would have a speaker come, we'd all be in the gym, and the kids would get it and not get it at home. Well, now that we're able to do this virtually and have to do it virtually, this presenter has a whole packet for families as well. So it's a really nice reach out and opportunity to bring that whole school community into this kindness initiative, which will be our kickoff for next week, which is the week of the 25th. So things are moving along well, and thank you for all that all of you do. And it is wonderful to be able to stay in our hybrid learning model right now because our kids do need to be in school. So thank you.
Thanks, Mary Kate.
Can I ask a question for both Mary Kate and Mark? Can you give us a quick update on the latest on MCAS testing?
We did get a window of testing, and we know the tests are going to be shorter. Instead of two sessions each, it will probably be one. But other than the big window, we'll meet as an admin team to determine how to administer these. And we don't have a lot of direction yet in terms of remote students and in person. Mark?
And just to add, obviously, it's very, very fresh information. The new window for testing in the spring was just provided, I believe, yesterday in an email from DPC. And then this afternoon, we got an additional update that kind of gave us some training opportunities for administrators and test proctors to be able to kind of get up to speed with all the updates and changes. So once we go through those trainings and have everything ready to go, I'm happy to share out with the committee. But we know that the grades three through eight will be one session instead of the two sessions it generally is, which will shorten the testing window and time for those students. But we're still waiting to hear back on our grade 12 students who still need it to earn the diploma in our current grade 11 students, who I believe the state is working on some type of modified competency determination for that grade level. But we've not yet heard any more updates on that. So that's kind of where we stand, and we'll be sharing information with families as we get closer to it and we get more information.
Okay, thank you. Did we, remind me, did we do them last year?
We did not.
No.
So nobody, they were waived because school was interrupted, and so we didn't, okay.
And I believe in superintendent curriculum, if I'm wrong, but one of the major reasons it was waived is because the federal government allowed a one-time waiver for high-stakes testing at the state level, so that allowed them to do it. And I know that it's not been given this year, and I know that...
Yeah, it was state law that had to be changed, actually, on top of the federal waiver. It's a two-pronged requirement. Sorry to cut you off, Mark.
No, thank you.
The only testing we did do last year was WITDA testing, which is the English Learner Test.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my turn. Hi, everybody. To piggyback off of what Mary Kate said about testing, this is our assessment period as well as we look at the mid-year. We are doing our STAR testing. We are doing our Fountas Empenoe. That's a reading test. We're looking at our children's writing. And there's a mid-year math assessment, just to make sure that everybody is making the progress that we would expect. And if they're not, we are working hard with each and every family to try to remedy that. So some highlights at KCC. Like Mark was saying, the PD day went really well. We started our day with a reading workshop, which was really nice for the teachers to get some strategies, to share some nice ways to teach the kids. And it was focused on the teaching and the learning, reading and writing in English Language Arts. And thanks to Jen Kenny for putting that little piece together, and it went very well. They broke into breakout groups and talked about the assessments that they want the kids to have as the year goes on, just to benchmark. So that was very productive. We have had a lot of teachers out, being quarantined, and have been able to cover all of our classes. And we are now seeing it today, I think we only had, I can't, eight or 10 maybe out, which sounds like a lot, but when you compare it to last week's numbers, it's not so bad. And many of those teachers who are out are working from home, like Patty was saying, teaching their children remote, so there's no sub needed for that. So that's always nice. And I feel like it's starting to just get better every day. I would also like to recognize our students. We had 29 students complete the Vacation Reading Challenge that Meg Smith put together. And we're recognizing them by saying their names over the announcement, and they put together lovely certificates, and they get to choose a free book. So if you're a recipient of the Falcon Eye, you'll see all their pictures coming up this week. And I think that that's about all I needed to tell you tonight. So if you have any questions, here I am. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Okay, so also, I think we have our athletic director here. Matt, would you like to? Well, actually, I don't know if you want to go a little bit later, but Matt can talk a little bit about the winter sports season that has gotten off the ground. And then if you have any questions you'd like to ask him, he is available for that as well.
Thanks for having me. Yeah, we've started now at every level for our athletic program. We still, our first games have been in basketball at every single level, so middle school, freshman JV, and varsity. We are getting ready to start hockey games. That'll be next week. We were delayed due to Montemoy closing for two weeks, which delayed the start of our season. We're a co-op with Montemoy. We also start gymnastics this weekend as well. So we're kind of in full swing. A lot of protocols. It's a lot of groundwork that we had delayed to get the season going. But we certainly think it's worth it. Our kids certainly think it's worth it, parents as well. It's, you know, I think it's imperative to get them out, get them moving around. And it's been a lot, but I think, like you say, a lot of smiles on their face in their practicing. It's going to be some work, and as we told our kids and coaches, if there's a positive, there's a positive. One of the teams is going to get shut down, and they're aware of that. So we, every day is a plus. We value every day, and I think so far, our kids have adhered pretty well to what we're doing. It's, you know, the season's kind of tight. We're going to get through what we can get through, and we're taking every measure we can, as are the teams in our league, and our superintendents lay down ground rules as well. So we're on track to get through the season. It's kind of, it's luck at this point, to be honest with you. If one of our opponents is positive, and then we're going to be out for two weeks. But right now, we're fighting through, and we're into game three or four for our basketball programs, and we're moving along. So I certainly take any questions you have regarding athletics at this point.
Anyone?
I just wanted to circle back on what you said there. It sounds like we're about to be in full swing, but we're not currently in full swing. So we have two more sports kicking off this weekend, and then we have football practices starting in a couple of weeks, I guess.
So we're in full swing in the sense that we've been practicing with hockey and gymnastics in terms of full swing, just in terms of competition. So there are hockey's next week, gymnastics this weekend. So we're, or this weekend for both hockey and gymnastics. So we're going to, everybody will have that first game under their belt after this weekend. The fall two season, which you're referring to, is with football, volleyball, indoor track, among others, and cheerleading. That season begins February 22nd, going into April. So yeah, it's only a month away. It's creeping up here quick. And there's obviously going to be some logistic issues with that, with the winter, and still in full swing and trying to get gym space for everybody and try to get kids out on the field. So we know there's going to play a role in that season, but we're going to prepare the same way.
So I think I was just, the thing, when you came last time, when we started talking about winter sports, the competition piece is the part that I get concerned about because we're mixing with schools, other communities, where that may have different positivity rates and all that stuff. So I understand we had a team come to Mashpee, right? So we played basketball at our gym. Was that right?
Right, we played a couple of times at our gym, yeah.
Yeah, so we've had a couple of games at our gym. And so out of those events, have there been any cases or close contacts or any issues? I think it's been at least 10 to 14 days since we had our first one, right?
Correct. Now, so far, we've had, counting middle school now, we've probably had eight or nine home games, maybe six to eight away games. We've had no positives. So, or no other schools have called us to say they had a positive player on the floor. We had JV basketball shut down for us for two weeks. This is before the start of the season. I think in terms of the league, there are two teams currently out basketball-wise in the league. There are none for hockey, and then none, I have no other for gymnastics either. So right now, we're going to get a phone call at some point. It's probably inevitable at some point of this year. And, you know, we just, you take every precaution. I think every other school does too. The key is, like anything else, just to make sure that if kids don't feel well, all these things, the messages we send out every day, that hopefully they and their families adhere to that and don't come to practice and make sure that they take every measure precaution to keep everybody else safe as well.
Well, I'm glad to hear that it's going well. That's great. I kind of was losing track of how many games we had had already, and so time's flying by, of course. But so congratulations on that, and apologies because normally, inevitably, something that we say at this meeting on Wednesday night ends up happening the following day. So I'm going to apologize now in case I jinxed you. That just seems to be how these meetings have been going, but I wish you continued success. So thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, would now be a good time to mention, as far as return to play changes that are happening?
Yeah, why don't you have a little opportunity to emphasize that to all who are listening?
Right. So this is new information that's come to light that the, you know, we're still learning, of course, about all the long-term effects of infection. And one of the things that's come to light recently is the possibility of heart involvement with a COVID infection. And certainly, as with other things, young people are less at risk than older people. But there has been some documentation at the NCAA level of athletes with some degree of less than 100% heart function after a COVID infection. It's much more likely if you've had a more serious infection, but it's been known to happen even without symptoms. And so because of that, the American Academy of Pediatrics is now recommending that any student athlete that has had a positive COVID test have an evaluation by their healthcare provider before they're allowed to return to play. If they have what's distinguished as moderate or severe symptoms with the infection, then they're going to need to see a cardiologist and have some testing done. And then the important piece to know is that there is going to be a return to play. And then the important piece to know is that um, there is going to be a return to play. You know, gradual reintroduction, um, similar to what's done in concussions where you start off with some light exercise and they're progressed over um, five to six days to full activity. And so it is gonna extend the period of time that an athlete is gonna be out uh, from just the 10-day isolation period to approximately a week longer. And the details of, you know, whether this is uh, gonna be a serious thing or whether it's uh, you know, it's a caution are still not clear. But that is the recommendation right now. And so I feel like that's what we should do.
Thank you. So our trainers put together a packet that they'll share. Um, I'll, he's gonna share with me and I'll share with everybody on this, this call. Um, as a four-step process to come back. Uh, I, I think obviously we need approval to put in any sort of handbook. I think we need to get it out to parents. We're starting to get uh, we've had positives that come back. And I think the communication has to be there with families or or they're, they're taken by surprise. I think that's when we run into problems uh, in the return to play area.
And I have encouraged any family that does have difficulty the message of following the guidelines to connect with me. Because student safety is first and it's for their child's well-being that we are putting these in place. And whether it was well communicated um, or not, that's not gonna change the, the outcome of having your child checked carefully. But yes, we will make sure we do as best we can to communicate in advance of someone.
Uh, is the fall season, fall two season, an abbreviated season?
So yeah, the, so the fall two season was created um, because of the loss of certain sports and and during the fall season that were deemed high risk. And it is somewhat of an abbreviated season. So I think we're looking at uh, February 22nd towards the end of April, maybe 25th. I think I mentioned, I emailed it out, but so it is somewhat of an abbreviated season. I think the challenge has become weather-wise and fields-wise for us. Um, you know, football is the one that stands out. Obviously, we have the gym and and availability for volleyball. Uh, but that really stands out as the one that that's gonna be an issue with, with fields and the weather.
And, and there's no championships, correct?
No, the, so the, I, I believe the MIA's uh, committee today voted that there will be no um, sectional or state championship during the fall two season. So what we're looking at is for volleyball, anywhere from a 10 to 12 game league schedule. Uh, for football, we are looking at a seven-week schedule and for indoor track, uh, which will actually be outdoors because there's really no indoor place to run with the exception of Wheaton. Uh, we're probably looking at, at six dual meets uh, during that time period.
Alright, thank you.
Matt, may I ask one more question? Um, it just in, you mentioned the fields and those conditions. Um, in an, in an email to me, you said that um, we might have to rent turf fields um, in order to hold football games. Um, just based on the limitations of our fields and weather, et cetera. Um, would that funding come out of the revolving account for athletics or does it uh, need to be offset somewhere else?
No, I, I, I think our athletic budget can handle that at this point. Uh, particularly with the, with the I, I think the, the limited number of games uh, and sports. Uh, I, I think we can, we can handle that without having to delve into either another account or even revolving. So I, I think we're okay on that end. But I, I think I mentioned that in the fall, that that might be an issue. I just want to bring that up because inevitably, if we have to move something because of field conditions, uh, you know, people are always disappointed in that. It's I don't think there's gonna be a lot of fans there anyways, but uh, certainly those are phone calls that people receive and I'm sure I always see if we have to play it. Sandwich or Falmouth that has a turf field, we would be able to play if field conditions warranted that.
Okay. I just wasn't sure. I've never rented a turf field, so I wasn't sure what kind of money that we were talking about. I didn't know if that was expensive or not.
It, it could get expensive. I mean, we, Sandwich has been very good to us, rent and given us free use of their field. Um, but you're right, it, it, it potentially could get expensive. We're talking four hours at a, a couple hundred dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Matt. Patty?
Uh, my only other thing, and I, I don't know, we had Dr. Curly's on here and Dr. Hanscom, could you just give a quick two-minute overview of the um course that you're running weekly for collaborative problem solving for families?
Oh, yeah, sure. Um, do you want me to start, Jamie?
Sure.
Okay. Um, so it's an eight-week course um, for parents that um, Dr. Curly and I both are became certified in the collaborative problem solving model. And as part of that certification, we were able to offer this course for parents. So we are, we had our, um, we've had two sessions so far of the eight weeks. And um, what parents get out of it, hopefully, is the sort of a better way of thinking about um, challenges with their children. So a better way of approaching challenges and a better way of sort of um, thinking about them. And I'm gonna let Dr. Curly talk from here because Peapod just came and my dogs are gonna go crazy. So I am, so the timing is insane that I'm talking right now. So excuse me.
Yeah, so Hope sums it up well. It's eight weeks, um, approximately two hours each session. Um, and they'll be learning the skills and then practicing them. They have homework um, every week. Um, and then they come back and there's, it's, it's a mix of us talking, um, breakout rooms. And so far, we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the, um, from the parents that have been. So it's been good.
Yeah, we have an awesome group. We're super excited about it and we hope to, it's the first time we're teaching it. It's the first time we're teaching on Zoom. Uh, and um, I wanna give a shout out if there are any parents out there who are in our group for what, um, who are watching because it's an awesome group of people so far. Like, we're very, very excited.
How many people do we have participating right now?
So we had so many sign up that we had to have a waiting list. Uh, but we do keep the class small because you interact a ton. Um, so it's right now at 10. Um, and then, like I said, we had a, a waiting list of, of folks who um, will get first dibs of signing up um, when, if we offer it again, which we, we definitely will.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry. One more thing that Jamie mentioned, which is really important last night, is that both of us were trained in this model uh, by the funding through NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness on Cape Cod. So we just want to give a shout out that they funded our training so that we could then bring this back to the district. So, alright.
Thank you. Uh, the last item under my um, section here was an update on the strategic planning process. Uh, we were almost at the completion stage at the end of last year and then it got interrupted by the COVID closure. Uh, we have interacted with our facilitator. We had attempted to set something up in November, but the, the comfort level wasn't there. The next step uh, before we get to the final pulling it all together is a root cause analysis activity, which the facilitator did not feel it lent itself well to uh, a Zoom situation. And so we had attempted to sort of whittle our group down a little bit to do that. Um, we ended up postponing that. So the, the goal is a February or March uh, gathering and hopefully of the larger group to, to finish that piece and then finalizing the action steps. We sort of have our goal areas. This, the goal is still to be able to present uh, a strategic plan for the school committee to approve before the end of this school year and it would be implemented starting with the next school year. So I, I'm pretty confident that that will happen. We might just have to do it in a, in a way that isn't ideal, but can still accomplish the goal.
Thank you. Any questions for Patty before we move on to Ashley? Ashley, it's all yours.
Thank you. Um, in your packet, an updated FY21 budget summary. Um, we are still on track. In reference, um, there's updated school choice, our revolving accounts, and also grant funding. Um, I did not receive any questions earlier today about the packet. Um, are there any now?
This is Dawn. Can you just walk me through the um food service page, uh, page 73?
No problem. This one might be a little confusing and I'm trying to work out the best model to present this data in. But what I was trying to do with this um, this paper was show you what is currently in our revolving account, which is the first column. The second column was the $4,000 that we received from the CARES funding. That was at the end, or the middle of December. Um, it was very late notice, so we made a one-time transfer of supplies to that grant and we've closed that out. The third column are all the direct expenses that have been charged to the town to date or as of 1231, um, which is approximately $186,000. The fourth column is a total. Um, and then off to the side, the claims not posted are federal and state reimbursements that we're receiving for students who have had um, breakfast or lunch at the free rate.
So if I take this in the 94,000 into account, we would have a positive balance of 83,000 or something like that?
That is correct. Um, with that being said, in discussions with Dawn quarterly, we are looking at the food service account as a whole. Um, as we've discussed kind of each month at our school committee meeting, any revenue we receive, they are going to backcharge that account. Um, taking that money out of, out of their COVID funding. Um, as we continue forward, we'll continue to have these conversations. We're set to meet again in March to discuss.
So, so wait a minute. You're saying that the 83,000 or the 94,000 would go into, would go to the town?
It wouldn't go to the town. It would sit in our account, but our expenses would move back to our revolving account.
And still be charged against the um, Town of Mashpee CARES Act?
Yeah. So at the end of the day, our food service account um, come June should be at zero. And should not be in a deficit because anything that's in deficit spending would get charged to the Town's CARES Act.
Okay. Alright. Cause originally my concern was that we were gonna end up with a deficit because I thought the, the CARES Act only covered stuff through the end of December and didn't cover stuff in
Yep.
Into 2021. Is that correct?
It go, it goes all the way until now, June 30th.
Tell, okay. Alright. Thank you. That's my biggest question. That was my biggest question.
Um, and then the final piece of my report are the um, updates to the COVID expenses. Um, it it is similar to last month. Um, we haven't had a lot of additional expenses incurred. As we keep going, I'll update this for the next meeting. Thank you.
All set? Ashley, okay, great. Uh, next. To, to do uh, subcommittees and working group, health advisory, um, Nurse Daisy.
Good evening. Um, we had our health advisory meeting uh, this past Wednesday. You know, Dr. Parkinson is still on the agenda item, was talking about um, pool testing. So Department of Elementary and Secondary, DARIAD, um, has released um, pool testing um, opportunities. So we did submit a proposal which would um, moving forward, um, have a another phase that there's a meeting this Friday to look at possibly um, having the opportunity with DSE supporting a six-week program that they would pay for, supply, train, and give us the materials um, to potentially do testing um, with obviously parent permission and staff permission. We're not sure exactly how and when it would all work. There's more information to follow, but that was the discussion. So I don't know, Patty or Greg, you want to throw anything into this discussion. Um, but it's still a work in progress. There's a lot of information on the DSE website about it. Uh, just kind of putting it out there for questions.
Yeah, I would just add, so again, it was one of those quick turnarounds. I think it was a Friday release from DSE. Uh, then there was, so we met on the following Monday, um, I think it was Hope and Stacy and I, just to sort of go over the summary that they provided. I think the school committee received that as well. And then um, health advisory talked about it, but on Tuesday, so Monday, then Tuesday, um, Stacy participate and Ashley participated in a webinar presented by DSE. And they're proposing, you know, the new wave of federal COVID money that's supposedly flowing to the schools as this is a great opportunity to use that money is one of the things they focus on. At my understanding, and I'm gonna turn it over to Greg in a minute, is that it's um, the first six weeks, and it's supposed to start by the end of January, the first six weeks is fully funded through DSE, and that includes the materials, the testing, the labs. We do not have personnel to do this, so there would have to be personnel hired as well. After the six weeks, this, the district has to um, either choose to continue or not. And that is something we would have to fund and whether we would use the federal money that we don't know how much that will be yet anyway to do. It's pool testing, so you would have a sampling of whether it's staff or students. And yes, students would have to have parent permission. So if you have 10, if you take 10 individuals, they all get swabbed. It all goes into the one sample. That sample is tested. If it comes at back negative, those people are all good to go. If it comes back positive, all of those 10 people then have to have another binex test. Whoever shows up positive then has to have a PCR test. Um, so there's a lot of levels of sort of responses to that because in that initial pool test, if it comes back positive, then we have to take steps for all 10 of those individuals until more information is gathered. And I did like Dr. Parkinson was, and I don't know if it's a possibility of trying it as a pilot program. Um, and whether it would be a small group of teachers or staff, again, the smaller the pool, the better for us because if you have 20 in a pool and something shows up as positive in that initial pool, you lose 20 staff members until we know information. There is a quick turnaround apparently of 24 to 48 hours, I believe, but that's all I'm gonna say. We did, so we did come, submit the survey was due last Friday. And there is another webinar on Friday based on the fact of whoever submitted the survey. And I think George is gonna sit in on that with us as well just to find out more information. So we didn't want to close the door, but we're not saying that we're moving forward uh, until we have all the information we need to make the best decision. But Dr. Parkinson, take it away.
Yeah, so just to, to back up one step, I think, you know, it's important to understand what they're trying to accomplish here. So the idea, you know, of, of surveillance testing, you know, is something that it makes sense ultimately from a public health goal. If we can move to, from sort of just chasing, chasing the, the bunny that's positive and where, where did it go? To being, you know, proactive and actively screening before there are, you know, symptomatic cases then. From a public health point of view, that makes sense. Now, the, so the process that Patty described is uh, what would be involved with that at this time. And so you know, I, I think it's important that if, if we're gonna do this, you know, it has to be, it has to be a positive experience and it has to be user-friendly. I think, you know, a lot of that revolves around the turnaround time for testing. You know, obviously, when you identify a pool, the advantage of that is that uh, you don't have to test, you know, you don't have to wait for the results of every single uh, person. And there's also a cost effectiveness in batching them together. And, and you know, universities have done this with some success. Um, but in order for that to work, you have to, once the pool is identified, you know, a positive, then clearly there needs to be a rapid ability to um, to find out who's the positive is within that cohort. And you know, I, I think for me, if, if the turnaround time is too long, if there's a two-day lag at every opportunity and then it's eight days before you get it back, that kind of defeats the purpose. Um, uh, and so I think the devil's in the details and you know, the, the initial application is just to keep uh, skin in the game and stay part of the process. And then as it moves forward to evaluate whether it seems to be um, this this particular form of, um, surveillance is, uh, gonna be worth moving ahead with.
And one other piece to this application and this, the way it's set up is it's geared to have you have at least 80% or 100% of your identified population that you are testing participate. So, um, there is that factor to it also for it to be, um, effective and meet the way that they have it set up. So again, um, it's a swab with a little Q-tip, swirl it three times each nostril, put it in a little baggie. It goes off into a pool of tests. And then the Bi-Next Now antigen test is what's done next. Generally, um, again, the initial swab is back, um, in 24 to 48 hours. Then you call the people back. Um, that Bi-Next Now test is done in 15 minutes. You identify your positives and then they have to follow up with the PCR test. So, you know, ideally in a real world with staffing and, um, a location and all that, um, you're still looking at a three to four day period of time, um, for surveillance testing. So, and needing a, a, a pool that's effective size. So.
Thank you.
And the testing, I mean, obviously is ideally targeted at asymptomatic individuals in the school system because anyone who has symptoms is not going to be participating in that pool because they are not in school.
This test is only used on asymptomatic people.
And also, oh, sorry, um, parents have to give, oh, was just staff that we were doing?
However you do, you need permission from whoever.
But you need permission from everyone, um, in order for them to be a part of it. That's correct, right?
Correct. And it has to be reported, logged in, documented, reported to the state. Um, there's a whole
So it's not like an opt-out thing. It's an actual opt-in.
Opt-in.
Yeah. Okay. That's what I thought. Yep.
And I know we'll get more information on Friday, but Stacy or Dr. Parkinson, was there a cost from your last webinar you watched? What, once the six weeks goes, what is the cost per test?
$5 per test.
And ideally going to be doing that frequently because
Right. Every week. The, the, the goal is you do it every week.
And I also, if I remember correctly reading somewhere, we had to plan on three additional people?
Correct. That's, but it seems like actually you can jump in on that, but given the amount of, uh, cause you also have to contact, trace it out. Um, you know, record it, do the samples, call people back, review the results and do it again.
That $5 per test is truly an estimate. Um, that's the average because we do not have the infrastructure in place, um, including personnel, um, contacts with the lab currently and the means to get the testing to a lab. We would have to factor those in as well. Um, I do not have any additional information on any of those costs right now. Um, if we were to enroll in a six-week program, that would run us through March 28th, it looks like. And then we would have to decide if we need to keep going. Um, so I just wanted to put it out there that $5 is truly an estimate. Um, and there's a lot of other factors that could go into that.
Thank you.
And one thing we also discussed was the, um, we're considering and talking about whether it makes sense for the school to be doing this or if this seems more like a town hall kind of community-based, um, surveillance that might make more sense because at the school, we're pretty tapped in terms of what we're, we're able to do at this point, but the surveillance piece is so important. Um, it just feels like more of a community-based health initiative than a school-based one, but we'll get more info on that as well as we go.
And my last question to someone who said in on the webinar was, am I correct that it has to start when they firm in that first six weeks, which I believe was the end of January or first of February is the, the start date? And so your six-week window just gets smaller if you're not able to start on time. But, you know, we're already at January 20th and we have no personnel in place to, or, uh, infrastructure to handle this yet.
They in the initial six weeks bring reportedly bring you all the things you need, staff, um, to do it and then to train the people that will take over after six weeks. But, um, correct. There's a lot of what-if still.
Yeah. There's a lot to be learned in this seminar on Friday, so.
Would you provide the location within the school building somewhere for this?
So it can be done. A lot of the three districts that presented had different, um, places where they did it. Some did it during a school day. If they did students, some had staff come in before school, some had a centralized location, most did it so that it was done. Um, testing was, um, swabs were taken on a Wednesday or a Thursday, back Friday, Saturday, contact tracing, retesting, Bi-Next Now on Saturday, Sunday. Um, and then those that needed to refer out for PCR were out on Monday, Tuesday. So there is a lot to it. It's, you know, it, it's probably a good five-day-a-week job for somebody or a few people.
So this is, this is Dawn. I have a question. I, I guess this is a different type of conversation versus what we've talked about previously in regard to, um, the school being able to do, um, rapid testing of, of individuals, um, onsite. And as I recall, part of the concern there was that we didn't have the resources. So if we didn't have resources to do that, which I think is important, particularly given, um, the positive cases that have been identified out of the ones who had to take tests, um, over the past couple of months, at least from the information that was provided. I guess I'm looking for direction from, uh, the nurse or from the doctor, uh, which is more important? The surveillance testing or being able to, um, quickly identify, um, potential positive individuals?
We're able to identify positive individuals. All our local pediatricians have rapid PCR tests in their offices. So any students that, um, do present as sick, go to their doctors, get a test. There is very delay, no delay really in turnaround. And then for the most part, for most of our staff that are symptomatic, um, their tests are coming back 24, 48 hours max. Usually even they know the results in 24. So we don't have that issue right at this time with, um, symptomatic. This surveillance testing again is asymptomatic. Um, so surveillance testing, and this is a rapid, um, PCR swab pool testing. It's a PCR test. Um, that is a pool test, so it has to be, then you do an antigen test, then you do another PCR test. So, um, it's just the way the, um, pool testing works. So I'm not sure that this is not the only surveillance testing that is out there. I think down the line, we will see other options. Um, and we're exploring all those, uh, working with the Board of Health in the Barnstable County and VNA to look at what they'll have to offer, what the police and fire departments are offering, hoping to, you know, sooner than later have something set up that's available for staff surveillance, whether it's this model or a different model. There's, it's just an ongoing fluid situation. So eventually we will have some kind of surveillance testing. Go ahead, Greg. Sorry.
I, I think I'd just add that they're both important. I mean, if you're putting a baseball team together, you want to have every position covered. And it's more a question of what do we have at each position available to us? And I think that's what Stacy's reflecting on, that right now, the ability to get rapid turnaround on PCR tests within the community for symptomatic people is improved. Uh, surveillance testing, um, we don't have at all.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any others? Uh, we'll move on to, uh, Consuelo and the, oh, um, excuse me, the outreach working group?
The outreach working group met, um, when was that?
Uh, today.
Oh, was it this week?
A couple of days ago.
Yeah. Yeah. Yesterday.
I thought it was today, so you guys are better than I.
Definitely yesterday.
Holiday, so I was getting myself confused. So outreach working group did meet on, um, Tuesday and we had two sort of topics to explore. And part of it was Consuelo providing an update on the five-year plan that she's drafting. It's not in a complete form, but just to sort of start to throw, um, discuss ideas and vision that she has. And then the other one was to review and plan for the 2021 family opinion survey, or it will be our fourth one. And, um, so I can address that after Consuelo if she wants to share out about her plan.
Um, I sent you guys a document, which is essentially the executive summary, um, for what the five-year plan would be. Um, and essentially the highlights are that we're going to make the, uh, school store much more of an educational enterprise and have students coming through as interns, um, working on various projects, whatever, whether it be a particular project or retail management, um, just sort of matching up the needs that, uh, the school has with, um, what we can do here in the store. Um, and then the other missions would stay the same, which were to be an outlet where we are connecting with the community and highlighting and showcasing what students are doing. Um, we've been moving in that direction piecemeal and now we're sort of trying to move more aggressively that way. I do have two new, um, student interns coming in. They're going to be, one is gonna be working as my social media manager and the other one is gonna be setting up a new line of business for us, which is, um, sublimation-based, which is, um, I think on the school committee report, on my report in the back, there's a picture of a mug that says you're on mute. So the sublimation process is the ability to print on mugs and different substrates. Um, and I have a young lady who's gonna sort of create that process in the store. Um, and then, uh, we could, you know, customize things for people, which the commons has also mentioned as something that they would, uh, they feel would, has a good market for us. Um, we're also looking at adding, um, the, bringing in the 3D printer and potentially printing up like a little keychain or a little toy where somebody could get it personalized, um, which would be an additional source of business. And we're also looking at being more profitable. Currently I only have about a 25% markup because I go through, um, the printers. I purchase my merchandise from there. Um, but we are looking at, um, purchasing direct wholesale, which should actually double, um, my profitability. Um, but I, I want to make sure that when we're looking at the store, we're deciding what's the most important to us, whether it's the educational component, the mission of connecting with the community or profitability. And I feel like they're all important. I don't want to disregard any of them, but I don't feel like profitability is the key. The challenge we're facing right now is that we have to move around a lot because the commons is giving us free rent. And very graciously, by the way. And, um, in order to maintain a location and grow, I feel like it's important for us to have a permanent home. Um, and we are currently talking with them about where we might go and what the costs are. I'm estimating that $24,000 or $2,000 a month would be enough to cover their concerns. And I'm hopeful that we might be able to negotiate, um, that down as they see the additional values that we can bring to the, um, commons by collaborating with them in different ways. So I don't know if anybody has any questions?
So, so this is, um, Dawn. I think, um, at a point when Consuelo has, um, a little more, um, of the, uh, five-year plan formulated, um, the school committee probably should have an executive session to discuss the strategy for that going forward. And I would suggest that, um, we schedule that, uh, when that's ready.
Can do. Any other questions? Thank you. Um, new business surveillance testing program for COVID-19, DSC?
Can I just add one? Excuse me, George. May I? I didn't finish addressing the opinion survey.
Oh, sorry.
Committee, we compiled the list of all the questions that we've asked every year and trying to look at, uh, the commonalities. And, uh, Kathy brought up a good point. Is the goal to, to look at growth or is each year's survey sort of an independent? We've always had schools, I mean, school year specific questions. The first year we had school start time questions on there. The next year we had, um, homework questions, attendance questions and social emotional support questions. The third year of the survey, those first two years we used Survey Monkey. The third year we went with Panorama. We did not have the same flexibility for creating the questions and wording them the way we wanted. We're not going with Panorama again. So this being the fourth year, we're probably gonna land with Google. We had pretty good responses in the summer to some of our parent surveys as we prepared for the school year opening. And so the next step is the, uh, admin team is going to develop sort of a, a list of questions for the 2021 school year, no, 21, well, for the 2021 survey. And then the outreach group already has its next meeting set up to then review those again. And once we've formatted the survey again, like we've done in every year, we'll have a focus group that comes in to take the survey and give us feedback on the wording of the questions, the length of time it takes to respond. And, um, we'll move from there, but that's where we're at with this year's survey. And we're still aiming for the same frame of sending, which is the tail end of February. Last year, uh, we had only an 18% response rate, but timing-wise was when we then landed into permanent closure on March 13th. So it was right in the middle of the survey. Disruptive.
Patty, will we get to see the draft questions before you do the focus group?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's hard to not have Nicole in our outreach. That's her thing, but we
I don't mind, I don't mind not being on the outreach working group. I just, um,
No. Well, no, but your input's valuable. We'll definitely share the questions that we've developed with the committee before we finalize and test it out.
I was just gonna say that I think, um, after, you know, after you just kind of reviewed the history, um, I think in many years it's gotten too large. I think the goal is for it to be, to borrow a Hope term, more of a dipstick survey so that, um, we are actually, apparently that's an educational term. She showed me the reference the other day. But, um, so I think, um, my point is that it's meant to be sort of short, concise, but, but more importantly, track against our outcomes. And because we don't have the new strategic plan and we won't have it when we do the survey, we should make sure that we're at least comparing to questions that have been asked before, you know, so that, that, that subset, there's only about 10 of them that we've asked on every survey. Um, and in particular, the school culture one, we want to use to measure, uh, if we move the needle with like the tribal partnership and things like that. So.
Well, that was kind of the interesting thing was we got to see the last three years side by side and it didn't look like it was 10. It looked like there were only four questions that could ask. And I think Patty said because we made that switch last year to the new platform. So it was kind of, you know, to your point, that was one of the things we talked about. I think why we're sending it to the admins to kind of help whittle it down because it was a lot.
Some of the Panorama did match, but they were worded more in the negative. Remember the thing about the and I do think, I think most districts are starting or conceiving at this point, sending out related to the learning plan this year. Um, and so I think it's time for us to do that as well. And if we were gonna have the year-specific questions for 2021, it will be around a child's learning plan, kind of getting some of that back, particularly to inform us if next year we land, you know, in, in a similar learning plan. We want to be able to make any adjustments that will make it better.
Yeah. Great. Thanks for, uh, your work on that, Kathy and Dawn.
Thank you. Any other questions before I cut Patty off again? Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the surveillance testing program for COVID.
Which I think we've already talked about.
Yeah.
It just got put in two places so we would make sure. I, I'm not sure unless Stacy or Dr. Parkinson has anything else they'd like to add or you have any questions, you can ask them.
Okay. Thank you. Um, items the chair did not anticipate in advance. Nicole, did you want to bring up, um, what we had emailed and talked about early, well, emailed?
Yeah. So by now I think you guys should have all received, um, either from me as the Division Seven Chair or from Georgia Patty, the, um, letter that Carrie Ames, the Chair of the Sandwich School Committee sent around. Uh, they passed at their last meeting. Um, they characterized it as a resolution, but what they sent to all of us was the letter that went to the Board of Ed. Um, and it's basically about establishing some equity across, um, the requirements for performing arts, uh, versus, um, athletics in terms of this COVID, um, world we are in. And, um, since we didn't, you know, they're, they want other districts to sort of sign on and voice their support if we're inclined. Um, so I suggest that we take that up at what it will now be a February 3rd meeting, I think. Um, and And so just have a look for any information you need. And I believe Patty circulated some information collected from the department heads here in Mashpee. Is that how you characterize that, Patty?
Yes, so last week, I think it was last week, I had asked Andy Torianos to reach out to his counterparts at the surrounding schools to get feedback on how or what they're doing in their music and drama departments. And so I think I shared the, I think I shared it with all of you, the results that he collected from there. So we can continue to sort of pursue and see, and I can show my superintendents as well in terms of if anybody is something. When I had a South Shore League superintendent meeting, which is related to sports, it came up and many indicated, yes, they were doing, you know, they had the drama, and I'm like, well, how are you doing this? The guideline said something. So I feel like things are going on in other districts that, well, we could learn about and see whether we're. It still made the guidelines, apparently.
Yeah, I was, yeah, so I think there's a lot to discuss there. So that was just my suggestion to the committee is if you guys would be willing to take a look at that and we could discuss it. We could, I don't know when Sandwich meets. But we could also see if anyone's available to attend to answer any questions we might have, or, I don't know, if, if that's necessary. I'm not suggesting it is at this point, but it's possible.
We could also invite our music staff to.
Yeah.
Needing to share their.
Yeah.
They're very creative people.
All right. Anything else? Any other business to come before the committee this evening? Oh, wait a minute, public comment. I don't see anybody on here for public comments. So that being said, is there any additional business to come before the committee this evening? Okay, hearing none. The meeting stands adjourned until February third, where we will meet again. Thank you all for coming.